Okay, I'll kick things off. I'm going to admit right now, we're probably going to be pressed on time. The other thing I need to acknowledge is this is a long time in coming. We've had some preliminary conversations, we've had a lot of staff work behind the scenes, and in all honesty, it's been exceptionally complicated, and I think you're going to see that as we go through the presentation. We've picked it up and put it back down, tried to identify problems and main questions and answer them, and it's just been a long time coming. But with that, our intention is to walk you through kind of the, some of the background code requirements that kind of underpin this conversation, and that is perimeter street standards, and I think you may recall that being passed and what that provides. But suffice it to say that as part of the platting approval process for subdivisions, perimeter streets, which are a defined term, have to be up to city standards or the platting can't be approved. Recognizing that's not always the case, our code may provision for improving the roadway interim standards and then providing for improvement to full street standards, all on the premise that a development agreement and a financing mechanism could be built to get from point A to B and B to C and ultimately end up with a full street somewhere out in the future. This is our first pass at trying to implement the provision of that code provision. Depending on how you count it, we have about six different funding mechanisms all in play in what we're going to present to you, and this was the thinking and the strategizing as well as the actual PowerPoint presentation would not have been possible without Gina Recoff from Gilmore Bell. I can probably remember her. She is the subject matter expert on the topic, and I think she made a comment in passing this is the most complicated one you've seen in Kansas. Leave it to Salina, we seem to have that reputation. But with that, she now, thanks to all of our conversations leading up to this and over the weekend, has a full understanding of our subdivision platting, our proposed developments, and our street challenges, and I'm actually going to turn it over to her. So, and as an explanation of what you have there, I was previously asked for some primary information on benefit districts. So what you received last week in your packet was kind of a more generic presentation that Gina's given before on special assessment districts and benefit districts. This is customized to the developments and the situation we have at hand. And I guess I would tell you that it's all premised on, we're trying to stay ahead of development and not allow development to grow up against a gravel road and then be scratching our heads saying, "How did we get here and how do we get out of this?" So trying to anticipate it and finance it accordingly.
Thanks, Mike. So I will commend you for being forward-thinking about this. I have regaled staff with some war stories, if you will, about other situations that I have been in where that development has occurred.
I'm sorry, sir.
Sure.
Would it be easier if we bring a chair back here for you to, you can, can you catch her on the?
I could see a bit of her head. All right, so there have been, there have been other situations that I'm familiar with where we have been challenged with creating a district in situations where that development has occurred right up to that gravel road, if you will, and then thinking about how we need to pay, how we pay for improving that gravel road. And as you'll see throughout this presentation, your options get more and more limited as the development progresses, and you have a bunch of single-family property owners that are in that area. So I won't belabor you with the basics of benefit districts. I think most of you are familiar with it, that it is a mechanism to put special assessments on property taxes to help pay for public improvements that are put in place that specifically benefit a defined geographic area. So that's what we're doing here. They can be used both for internal subdivision improvements and for projects with a more broad impact like collector's streets, and we'll see both of those things happening in the next, the rest of the presentation today. So a quick overview, I'm not going to belabor this point. All of you on the commission have gone through the process of creating a benefit district and levying assessments. I'll note that typically the process takes 12 to 24 months from start to finish when we're doing an internal, internal improvements for a brand-new subdivision. Some of the things that we're talking about today will have a much longer time horizon, permitted by law to have that much longer time horizon, but it does create some interesting challenges in terms of making sure subsequent property owners are well-aware that their property is liable for special assessments. We talked about this a little bit when I was here last September on this particular topic and talking about perimeter roads, but I'm just going to preview here. We're going to be talking about some, what I would affectionately refer to as advanced topics today in benefit districts. In that presentation that Mike gave to you earlier, just as a preview, these advanced topics aren't discussed in a lot of detail, but we'll talk about them later today. So what is precipitating this discussion? I think you guys know there's the Wheatland Valley development there that is just to the east of Markley in the blue up there, and then the additional lots within the Magnolia Hills Estates development that is moving from east to, or sorry, from west to east, and a Butts-Holmes Road there on the eastern side of this development. So this gives you a sense as to how many lots are really sort of eminently in play here, but there are obviously larger implications to a larger area there with respect to the improvements that need to be done to the Holmes and Markley perimeter roads. This gives you a little bit better picture of, on the left, the larger area that is impacted or will impact the need for Markley Road improvements. On the right, you'll see the larger area that it, that will necessitate the need for improvements to Holmes Road. So to give you an idea, in that whole area that we just looked at on the previous slide, we're estimating that there would be approximately 1,000 new lots in this particular area at about approximately 2.3 lots per acre. And the projected impact, if you assume each lot would have a home that would be valued at $250,000, that would generate annual city property tax revenue of about $853,000 at full build-out. So we thought that would be helpful to just give kind of, you know, baseline of the projected city tax revenues from this development. Mike, do you want to talk a little bit here?
I actually inserted that slide just as a reminder of what is kind of driving the development out there. And green indicates sewer, there's an interceptor sewer line that runs even further east of the area that we're talking about down in the creek channel, but that was installed quite some time ago at city expense, and then that will provide sewer service for a lot of the area that we're talking about. And you can see the water main along Markley Road is sufficient in size to support that portion of the development. So we have some infrastructure in place, but that's why we find ourselves focusing on the street improvements.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but in regard to the water line, the sewer gravity main, I mean, is that something where once the land is developed around that, that we will come back and recoup some of the costs for developing that?
Was that set up as cost recovery? We just, that was just an upfront method?
The interceptor was briefly set up as a cost recovery. Administratively, it became too onerous, so that was eliminated, but for a period of about four years, costs were recovered on the interceptor sewer line. The water line was a system enhancement to serve the Markley Road tower, which did not exist until the mid-'90s.
So let's talk a little bit about the, what, we'll start with the most plain vanilla of all of the benefit districts that we're talking about today, and then move through each of the advanced topics that I previewed earlier. So Wheatland Valley is the most plain vanilla of all of the benefit districts we'll talk about today. The developer of this particular part of the Wheatland Valley development, which is the first couple of phases of Wheatland Valley, has requested a benefit district, or plans to request a benefit district for internal street, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, water lines, and also for sidewalks on Markley. The total cost of that is about $1.1 million. They're requesting all of that cost to be assessed to all of the property within this Wheatland Valley Phase 1. No ag deferral, like I said, plain vanilla here. This shows you the proposed phasing and the number of lots in each of the phases of this portion of Wheatland Valley. And so this gives you a picture of the total project cost at $1.1 million at the top that I told you about. And then we're assuming that the special assessments would be levied over a period of 15 years, so that $1.1 million would be borrowed through a general obligation bond. You would have, that the amortization period would be 15 years. For purposes of this discussion, we're assuming a 4.25% interest rate, and so over the life of that 15-year GO bond, you're going to pay $425,000 worth of interest. That also is going to be included in the special assessments against the property. You'll see we're having all of it go to the property owners, none of it would be paid by the city at large. And so for each lot in the Phase 1 lots, the principal amount of special assessment would be $45,828 if they chose to pay that upfront, or if they chose to have that financed by the city through general obligation bonds. Their annual payment each year, each lot's annual payment for a period of 15 years would be $4,163. The reason why you see Phase 2 and 3 lots up there with a lower dollar amount is that Phase 2 and 3 lots are only going to pay for stormwater detention and sidewalk improvements. Typically, what happens is when the developer is ready to proceed with the Phase 2 and 3 lots, they will come back with a subsequent benefit district petition to pay for the water, the sanitary sewer, and the internal street improvements at the time that those are needed to help build out the rest of those lots.
And no, no deferral means no ag deferral, so they'll all be captured as lots?
Right, so they will all, so let's say that this benefit district is approved in 2019, construction occurs in 2020, the city issues bonds late next year for, to finance those improvements. Those special assessments would be levied immediately and would show up probably on the 2021 tax bill. All right, so let's go to Magnolia Hills Estates, number 2. This is the area that we're talking about here. You'll see that it starts on the eastern side of what has already been developed, it goes all the way over to Holmes Road. What the developer is requesting in this area is internal subdivision improvements only against street, storm, water, sanitary sewer, and water lines for a total cost of $1.5 million.
Can we, Mike, clarify that dividing line? This is on the west side of that line?
So, here, let's go to, so they're asking the district pay 100%, but they are requesting ag deferral for a portion of the property. So this attempts to overlay their plans against that picture that you saw two slides ago, and the, the lots that will initially be platted are over there on the left or the west side. The unplatted area is outlined in the light blue over on the right or the east side, and the light blue area over there, all of which says future development, that is the unplatted tract for which the developer is requesting an ag deferral. Is that into your?
Yeah, as we talked about Magnolia Estates, number 2, previously we've talked about snapping a midline between Markley and Holmes, so this is the focus on that portion that's on the, essentially the west side of that line, up against the Markley side. And it's not, just giving the layout of the lots, it's not a clean, straight line, you can see the phasing there on that diagram.
So this is advanced topic number 1, ag deferrals. And I think a number of you may be familiar with ag deferrals. The statute, statutes in Kansas allow the city commission, at your discretion, to grant ag deferrals, and that essentially just means granting a delay in the payment of special assessments until the property develops, or is platted or otherwise developed. In order to be eligible for an ag deferral, a property has to meet all four of the requirements up there in that top box. It has to be in excess of 2.5 acres, it can't be platted, it must primarily be used for agricultural purposes, and to have a population density of less than one family per acre. At the city commission's discretion, the deferral can be granted for a period of up to 15 years, although for a variety of reasons, including some quirks in the statute, we generally recommend a 10-year maximum deferral. And then once that property either reaches the end of that 10- to 15-year period, or is otherwise developed, then, then the 15-year assessment period, like we were talking about before, begins and the property begins paying special assessments each year annually for a period of 15 years.
Why you recommend the 10 over the 15?
There is a, there is a quirk in the statute that arguably could limit the city's ability to recover interest for a period of more than 10 years. So, so in order to try and mitigate some of the cash flow impacts to the city, we generally suggest a 10-year deferral as opposed to the full 15-year deferral.
And if the deferral didn't allow, I mean, let's say it didn't develop out as fast as that, so they really needed the 15?
Right.
Instead of the 10, where do they stand in, or where's city stand if they're not paying the assessments?
The, the general way that it has been done is that the, the interest cost during the 10-year deferral period is not passed along. There is a question about whether you could pass along the interest during the additional five-year deferral period. I'm not sure exactly how the city has handled that in the past, in terms of passing along the interest during that additional five-year period. It's been a while since I think we've done an ag deferral on a project. I think that the, the story here is that, this next slide talks about the cash flow impacts to the city in a deferral situation. If you were to defer for, for a full 15 years as opposed to a 10-year period, the cash flow impact obviously looks worse to the city than a full.
I don't know if it helps, but when that time is up, whether it's 10 or 15 years, the assessments are due regardless of whether the development occurred. So the property that was ag defer, receives an assessment even if it remains agricultural and undeveloped at the end of the deferral period.
So on Slide 19, you know, as we talked about, so the city will issue general obligation bonds in order to fund the construction costs, and the city will do that upfront, and you'll begin paying debt service in year 1, because your bondholders don't care that you've given a deferral, right? They still want to get repaid on the loan that they've made to you, or the bonds that they've purchased. So then in the middle column, you'll see that, this shows that the special assessments would be deferred, let's assume for a 10-year period, so there's no payments coming in from property owners. So the net cash flow impact to the city in each of those first 10 years is, the fact is that you're at $22,000 a year. In years 11 through 15, you see you're still paying debt service on those bonds, but now you're getting in the first five years of the 15 years of special assessments, so zero cash flow impact to the city. And then in years 16 through 25, you're getting the special assessments, but you've already paid off all your bonds, so you have the revenue to pay back. The cash flow impact at the end of the day, you'll see that total column is zero. I will note that that does not take into account the city's carrying costs, or, you know, the fact that you've essentially fronted $22,000 a year for 10 years, or for 15 years until you begin getting paid back. So I'll leave it to you to quantify what you think that that cost is to the city. I should, I should stop. Any questions about this cash flow?
What percentage should we charge administratively? Is it like 3%?
The city charges a 5%, 5% of the project cost as an administrative fee for setting it up and administering the project, but there's no ongoing annual fee that's charged. So you can see that with this advanced topic, with the ag deferral, this table gets a little bit more complicated. So of the full $1.5 million project cost that you see in the top right corner, we've split it out between the portion that is not deferred and the ag deferral portion, added interest to it, there's your total cost, which is equal to your total debt service on your GO bonds. You'll see that annually, there would be a total payment on GO bonds of $141,000, excuse me, a year, that would have to be made to bondholders. $22,000 of that in the deferral period, the city would be covering, that's the table that we just looked at, and then the $119,000 of the 141 would be coming, would be special assessment revenue coming to the city each year from property owners that you could use directly to pay debt service. So assuming a 10-year ag deferral period, you know, of course, you'd be paying $22,000 a year in debt service on your bonds with no offsetting revenue source, so your total potential cost in that period would be $220,000. And then, like we showed in the prior slide, you'd start getting paid back in year 16. Below that, we have just quantified the principal portion of the cost for each of the various lots or unplatted parcels, and then the annual payment that would be due by, by property owners.
Just bearing in mind, some of those lesser amounts are just the portion attributable to part of the infrastructure, that we, there would be another round of assessments that would be applicable later.
Yeah, same kind of thing we talked about on Wheatland Valley. All right, so that is the internal street improvements, and, you know, what I would call the types of projects that you've typically seen before, things that the commission has done before in terms of granting ag deferrals, using benefit districts to fund internal street improvements. Now we're going to move to really the topic that we started some time ago, and that's using benefit districts to fund perimeter streets. And we'll talk specifically about Holmes Road first, and then Markley Road, again in the vein of going from less complicated to more complicated. So let's talk a little bit about the different street standards for collector and arterial streets, and I'll look to staff in the room to, to correct me if I misstate or anything. But, you know, what we're really looking at here is improving roads to either an interim street standard or from an interim street standard to a full street standard. And we thought this would be helpful to see the difference between those. To give you a sense of this, Markley is already improved to an interim street standard. Holmes obviously is not even an interim yet, but we'll be talking about using benefit districts to improve the roads both to an interim standard and then to a full street standard.
Markley's currently an interim, what, what matrix requires it to then go to a full street standard? Is there?
Yeah, in that section 38, the rest of that language that I had at the beginning, we spell out the definition of an interim street and a full street and kind of anticipate all of that as part of that code provision. Now, that doesn't mean that we could go back and look at that and say, "We want to adjust those standards up or down at either interim or full street standard," but at the moment, this reflects what the code says.
And so Markley is missing?
Yeah, it's missing a sidewalk, which is underway. We talked on what the developers about that, but for the most part, it's an interim street standard.
All right, so our, our goals here are twofold. The first thing that we're, we're trying to do with these benefit district proposals, and this goes back to a memo that we had shared with staff and with you last September, is to find a legally enforceable way to make sure that the developers are paying their fair share of the cost of improving the public infrastructure that's necessary to support their, their development. You know, so you can go anything from, you know, a, "I promise you I will pay for this when it's time to, to get it constructed," right, to a benefit district at the other extreme, or some other things in the meantime, in the, in the interim. As we discussed about a year ago, a benefit district is a tried and true way under Kansas law to make sure that property is liable to pay special assessments. And once you have created a benefit district, Kansas courts, as long as you follow all of the right procedures, Kansas courts have upheld the validity of those benefit districts and the requirement that the associated property pay special assessments, which gets us to the second thing, is establishing an overall financially viable source of revenues to help us pay for, for these street improvements that we were just talking about. So let's talk a little bit about Holmes Road here. You'll see Magnolia at the bottom of the outline here, and it goes north one mile to, what is the road on the north?
Cloud.
Cloud. On the southwest corner, you'll see that's the Magnolia Hills development that we're talking about. On the north side, Wheatland Valley is, is there on the, the west side. So Holmes Road, as you all know, is currently a gravel road with an average daily traffic count of about 225 trips per day. What we're talking about doing here with Holmes Road to improve it to an interim standard and a full street standard is in line with the memo that we gave back in September of 2018 and the direction that the commission gave us at that time to pursue benefit district actions for, for improving the roads in, using a phased approach in improving them to an interim street standard first and then waiting to improve to a full street standard until the traffic warranted. So what staff has suggested is that an interim street standard is necessary when the average daily traffic count exceeds 250 trips per day, and then a full street standard would be necessitated when the traffic count exceeds 6,500 trips per day. I think that gets to a question, answer to a question that one of you had a few moments ago. This is the approximate cost, and we'll talk about what that is for each of these areas.
What's the cost, unless you're going to talk about it later? What's the cost just to go directly from gravel to full street? I see it phased here, but I'm assuming it's cheaper to, it's less than adding those two together if you go directly?
Presumably, I know we had those conversations, I don't know if I know that enough.
One, so just going to the straight fold. Dan, do you have that?
In all honesty, we talked about that, but the reason we didn't go that route was just to allow time for development to occur, so we had more ability to collect assessments before we had to fund the full street standard. It got cost prohibitive to go ahead and pay for it all and carry that.
So is your sense that it was closer to 900 or closer to 1,500? And if you can't remember that, that's fine.
I'd have to hold it down.
I think it was about 50% more than the interim.
Yeah. What's?
In this, maybe later on, what's the traffic count on Markley right now?
Probably 45.
So we're a long ways even on Markley, so Holmes.
The 250 in Holmes is probably the one that we're, we're the closest to, and staff might be able to speak to the source of that, that criteria.
That's a county criteria as well, so it's a typical, they get excited about a bunch more cars on their gravel roads. When you start getting above 200, they get hard to maintain and wash 40. As you, as you drive around the county, you'll notice the same thing, and they have the same problem we do. That one's a problem already, actually, Mark, it's nearing, needing something done. Mark gets nearing, needing something done to it.
You mean Holmes?
Holmes, yeah. Yeah, today. If you go out there today, it's not easy to keep up. Neither is the one just to the north there along, you know, north of Crawford, same problem. The ones that they get urban, get close to urban. I guess that's one of the reasons that most of the roads, Markley's been paved for a long time. South Ohio was paved for a long time before we actually did anything to them. So I don't know when or why the county paved those, or somebody did before, but for some reason, Holmes has not been paved yet.
All right, so in implementing the phased approach that we talked about with Holmes Road, and given the development that is, the phased development that is expected out there, what we're going to walk through today is three separate benefit districts to improve Holmes Road. The first two would be to improve Holmes to an interim standard, and we really are just splitting up the north half and the south half because of how, the timing of when we expect the development to occur in Magnolia Hills and in Wheatland Valley. You can see that Magnolia Hills is sort of past that midpoint, is developing past that midpoint line between Markley and Holmes, and Wheatland Valley just isn't there yet. They're starting at the Markley side and working their way across first. And then the third petition would be to improve, once both halves are to interim standard, then the third petition would be to improve that full mile to a full street standard. So we'll go through each of these. And I should add that with each of these benefit districts, and now we're going to get to the third advanced topic for today, and that's benefit fees under 126819. With each of these three petitions, the way that the property ownership is set up, we have, and I'm going to go back, sorry, word, let me go back to the map and talk a little bit about this. So the south half of this map, you'll see we have the Magnolia Hills area in the city limits, and then we have the property that is on the east side is in the county as well as the little sliver there at the midpoint line that's in the south half. Because of, under general Kansas law, once a property owner can submit a petition to make improvements to roads, as long as we have signatures of at least 50% of the property owners within the district. For property that is in the county, as I think you all know, the city does not generally have jurisdiction over property in the county and therefore couldn't force the county to be in the benefit district. There are some provisions under Kansas law that would allow property owners in the county to sign a petition asking the city to improve the road and/or for the city to go to the county and ask the county for jurisdiction over that property for purposes of bringing it into a benefit district. We're assuming that in this particular situation, neither of those are an option.
Actually, that was Chairman Midrissin about the possibility of the county's consent. He was very tactful about it, but didn't see the value in giving us authority to impose assessments against county residents and decline.
So this is not the first time that this has happened in Kansas, where a city wants to improve a boundary line road, says it's not fair that we improve this road and only our residents pay for it. Once that property in the county annexes into the city at some point, they should have to pay their share of the road improvements. And so the Kansas legislature years ago adopted KSA 126819 that allows the imposition of benefit fees for property that's not included in an original benefit district but is benefited by an improvement once it gets that benefit. So I wanted to show you this map so you can see the boundary there if you aren't familiar with it. And the interesting thing here is we have developers that are in the city that are coming to the table, ready and willing to participate in benefit districts for Holmes Road. It happens to be a boundary line road, and all the rest of the property is outside of the county. So keep that in the back of your mind whenever we come back to this issue for Markley, because it's a very different picture for Markley. Okay, so I've previewed some of this for you. So benefit fees are for property not in the original district. About the only way you can have property not in an original district is you just don't have jurisdiction over it, so it's in the county, right? You have to have the district created by a petition. In this case, that petition would be submitted by the developers of Wheatland Valley and Magnolia Hills for an arterial street. And then, once that property is annexed and requested connect to Holmes, then they would be required to pay a benefit fee under 126819. So let's go to this picture that we looked about with the ag deferral and talk about the cash flow impacts of benefit fees. Unfortunately, I can't tell you what the cash flow impact of using a benefit fee mechanism is, because we don't know, none of us know, when that property in the county is going to come into the, annex into the city and request to connect to Holmes Road. So if I were doing budgeting, I would probably assume that the city is going to end up conservatively covering the debt service on the general obligation bonds issued to pay for this project during the entire 15-year term of the benefit district, and it will get repaid at some point in the future through benefit fees. But there, unlike ag deferral, there's no outside limit to that timeframe. So let's talk about the first proposed district for the southern half of Holmes to an interim street standard. You can see the property in the city and outside the city. So the property inside the city is the column that says special assessment to property owners. The property in the county is the benefit fee area. So Holmes to an interim street standard, just on the south half, is about $2 million plus interest there. So you'll see that the portion of the debt service on the general obligation bonds under these assumptions that the city would be carrying would be $117,000 per year for a 15-year period, assuming the property in the county doesn't come in and connects in that 15-year period. So total outlay would be the $1,000,000, $1,758 number, basically the principal and the interest for the benefit fee area. Okay, so now we're just going to replicate that same process for the north half, improving the north half to interim street standard. Again, the Wheatland Valley property on the left is in the city limits. Everything else is in the county. And the annual cost that the city would be covering for the county benefit fee area would be $105,000. If you carried that for the whole 15-year period, the city would be covering just 1.5, almost 1.6 million dollars over the 15 years. Again, that's for the interim standard.
Do we have some places like the Grand Total of east to south and the north?
Yep, next slide. Thank you. So Grand Total, south and north, about $3.3 million that the city would carry for the benefit fee area. Total project costs are assumed to be about $4 million. Again, that's in today's costs. One of the things that I will note here is that if we would have the developer submit a petition today, it may be a while before the traffic counts would get to that 250 trips per day on either the north or the south side. And therefore, that benefit district might be in place for a while before the improvements would actually need to be made. So we want to make sure that we are giving the city sufficient room, because that resolution creating the district acts as a maximum cap on the total cost that you could assess. What we've proposed is that we would specify $2 million of project costs, but that $2 million would be increased at a half percent per month from the date that the district is created. Now, that doesn't mean that you would just automatically add a half percent per month for, you know, however many years until the improvement's done and assess that total cost to the property owners. Instead, you would just assess the actual cost of improving it. So it doesn't give you a blank check, and it doesn't give you the right to, you know, build it to a super duper nice standard, just to the interim standard that we would describe. And the half percent per month is really just to account for inflation during that timeframe. So then, we'll move on to the third petition that we described, and this is upgrading from interim to full. And we're assuming that all of the interim street standard for the full mile would already be done, and that it would be likely that when you reach that 6,500 trips per day, it would be because this area is much more fully developed, and so you would do the full street standard all at the same time. So the cost to upgrade from interim to full would be a total of about $3.7, $3.8 million of project cost. Again, the special assessment to the property owners, that's the property that's in the city. The benefit fee area is the property that's in the county. So the annual debt service that the city would be covering would be $209,000 per year. And if you covered that for the full 15-year period without benefit fees being paid, the city would carry about $3.1 million of cost. It may or may not be likely that this would happen, that you would have all three benefit districts alive at one time. We don't know, but we thought we'd show you what the sum of all three together looks like. That's what slide 36 is. It very well may be that the interim street standard is there for 15 years, and then, you know, magically you get to the 6,500 trips per day and you're 16, and then that benefit district would kick in. But we don't know that, so. Okay, so Markley. We're going to replicate the process we just talked about with Holmes for Markley, but as you note here, there are a lot more developed properties that are in existence. It's not the, you know, large tracts of undeveloped property like what you saw with Holmes. You can see Magnolia Hills developed over there on the east side of Markley. Fox Court? Fox Trail?
Fox Tail.
Fox Tail. Oh, I apologize. Up there on the west side of Markley, up on the north. And then you'll also note the city park property up there. You can see the ball diamond up there at the top north side, along with some property owned by the city on the west side of Markley. But what we're talking about is improving Markley to a full street standard from Magnolia all the way up to the entrance to the ball fields up there. And this is the area, based on discussions with staff, that we felt like benefited from that property. I'm going to flip to the next slide, because I think it'll show you a little bit better here. You can see the city-county boundary line runs north up Markley, so that area to the left or on the west side is in the county, and then all the property on the right or the east side is in the city limits. You can see that we already have developed area, a significant amount of developed area there already. And so we don't have the situation that we have in, with Holmes, where there is the right composition of property owners and land area that allow the developers on their own to submit a petition for the improvement of Markley to full street standard. Again, petition requirements would, or the petition rules in Kansas law generally require the benefit district to have petitions signed by property owners of at least 50% of the land area within the city, and the developers of Wheatland Valley and Magnolia Hills don't have that. Or signatures from at least 50% of the property owners in that area, and two out of a lot is not 50%. So that's our unique challenge here with Markley because of some of the development that's already occurred, that has necessitated really the super complex aspects of what we're talking about today.
And this is a slightly, I don't know, but it just breaks out by, in the blue, you can see the developed area, and it provides you a percentage of the overall benefit area. It's attributable to development, attributable to each of the developments, proposed developments, and then the remainder is about 53% of the area is in the county and/or undeveloped area and not subject to development proposal.
So Markley right now, interim standard as we talked about, traffic count is about 4,500 trips per day. Full street standard, we've talked about what that needs to be, and the cost is about $1,400 per lineal foot. So that equates to about a $5.4 million total project to improve Markley Road. The developed property, we're assuming that those folks are not going to come to the table. There is not a viable way to bring them to the table to pay for the cost of this road. And so the city at large would be covering the share of the cost attributable to the property that's already been developed. Then for the undeveloped property that we saw, there are a number of mechanisms that we've explored to get the undeveloped property to pay their fair share of this. And really, this is what has precipitated, particularly on Wheatland Valley, the need to come forward and figure out how to do this because of the requirements in the code for the Wheatland Valley developers to show the city a viable option for it to pay for its fair share of Markley. So what we're proposing here is a strategy that would employ multiple successive benefit districts that would be created by property owners, by developers that come to the table for development of their undeveloped property, and they would agree to pay their fair share of the improvement of Markley, about 68 cents per square foot is what we're estimating the cost of Markley among all of the area that you saw in those prior pictures. So let's look at a way that we might be able to do that. You guys are all familiar with the typical benefit district petitions, where we have lots of discussion about what property is really benefited by the improvement. All of that has to be included in the district. And there is a separate, specific section of the Benefit District Act that essentially allows property owners to come and say, listen, I know that my property is not the only one that is benefited by these improvements, but I'm willing to pay the cost. Go ahead and assess me. I'm happy with that. I agree that I will pay. And it requires those property owners, in the boundaries that they're asking to be liable for special assessments, we have to have 100% of those property owners signing. The cost of the project can be allocated though to, or they can propose that a portion of the cost be allocated to the city to pay, so that, for example, they're not paying 100% of the cost, even though they're acknowledging that other people benefit. So it's used, this is a particular type of petition that's used in some unique circumstances, but we're proposing that this is one way to do this here. So let's see how this would work in action for Markley, for Wheatland Valley. So basically, what we've done is we've determined that portion of So basically, what we've done is we've determined that portion of Wheatland Valley that's within that larger Markley benefit area, and at that 68 cents per square foot, they would be responsible for about $770,000 of project costs. Recall that the overall project cost for Markley is about $5.4 million. And so what we would envision here would be that the Wheatland Valley developer would submit a petition under 126804C. They would say, we are happy to pay for the improvement of Markley to a full street standard. We will pay $770,000 for that cost, and city at large, you pay the balance of that cost. And this is the economics for each of the 78 lots in that Wheatland Valley area. But essentially, this petition gives the city assurance that you have $770,000 that would be contributed towards that $5.4 million project cost. We would similarly do something with the Magnolia Hills Estates, get a 126804C petition from the Magnolia Hills Estates property that would, the half that is benefited by Markley Road. And if we take the 68 cents per square foot, their allocable share would be about $400,000 of project cost. So now you have the 770 plus the $400,000 going towards your $5.4 million project cost.
So 1.2?
That's about right, yeah. Now, the idea would be that, and I'm going to go back here, would be that we would do these successive petitions for the remainder here, the bright blue area, if and when those properties decided that they were ready to develop. You know, one of the requirements under the code is that the developers show that they will pay for the perimeter street improvements. And so this 126804C option would be the action we would suggest to the developers to evidence their commitment to pay for those perimeter street improvements. From the developer's perspective, this is advantageous because you would think that presumably the lots would be sold off to third parties by the time that the assessments would come into play, and so it's not have a cash flow impact or balance sheet impact to the developers because of the benefit district and the special assessments would be a liability against the land as opposed to a personal liability or corporate liability of the developer. So that's the incentive for the developer to agree to do that as opposed to a contractual requirement. From the city's perspective, having those assessments running with the land, acting in the same priority as a tax lien is, as you might imagine, far superior than just a contractual commitment from the developer to pay, because you don't know if the developer will be around or will have the wherewithal to perform on that contractual obligation at the point that you would need the cash to finance that road. One disadvantage here, though, is that the 126804C option is only available until such time, only available prior to the time that the improvements are commenced. Once you start the improvements, once they're put into place, you can't use 126804C to retroactively create a benefit district to help pay for a part of the cost of Markley Road. Query whether that would really be the way that it would play out in practice. I don't know the answer to that. It may be that you would need all of that development to really get to the traffic count.
So I guess that's my question. So are we saying Markley, we would take immediately to the full street standard even though it's not required, or we're saying that would be down the road?
Down the road.
Okay.
So the other...
But we would retroactively be able to recruit...
Right. So if you got to the threshold where you said, 6,500 is met, it's now time to improve Markley in the full standard, and you had 60% or 70% of that accounted for in benefit districts, that other 30% may not be in place yet and afford you ready to improve it, and that's where 1268, 126804C is the limited option.
We're looking at some other options, but I don't know how that's going to play out. But right now, we believe this is the best option to, at least given where you're at today, recover those costs. And at least if the benefit district is in place today, you wouldn't have to use it at some point in the future if you didn't want to, or we found a better way to skin the cat, if you will. But it would be in place to be able to give you that ability to recover at least the $1.2 million that we're talking about.
The other downside, which you might all be tracking already, but you potentially have a home buyer that has around a special assessment, and then somewhere around the future, interim standard kicks in, and somewhere around the future, the full standard kicks in. This would position it in such a way that we would have the benefit districts in place, have the authority to collect them, and have a price, a cost, and an inflator. So we, as a city, would be, have the authority in place. It doesn't make it popular with the homeowners from the time to come.
Is that where the no protest gets recorded?
Well, you wouldn't want to speak to that.
Yeah. So in this particular instance with what we're proposing, we would not need no protest to be recorded, because we would be creating the district upfront, and the protest period, essentially, we wouldn't have one because 100% of the property owners, in that the developer, would have signed. The petition and the actual resolution that's made in the district would be recorded in the real estate records.
Do you share with me that Olathe has done something similar, that actually require signage at the entrance of the subdivisions, forewarning them or making it known that additional specials are pending?
How did you come up with the percentages of what would be allocated? Like on Markley, because there's a significant amount of traffic already that's not allocate, you know, that's not there.
Yeah, the only approach to city at large was actual development that had joined it. And only get a little bit further, there's some options for your consideration. You could make the argument and say that some of that traffic is outside of that area, and so the city wants to pick up more. These numbers are a little daunting as they were, but we're just trying to allocate it geographically as it had joined to the roadway.
I think your question was, how did you come up with the 68 cents?
Yeah. So that was, let me go back. So that was this whole area here, the square footage of this entire area divided by the total project cost of $5.4 million, and that equates to 68 cents per square foot. So slide 45 just summarizes all of the cost tables that you saw in all of the prior slides. So you'll see the two benefit districts we looked at for the internal improvements, then the three benefit districts for Holmes Road, and then the Markley Road Benefit District. Note that in the Markley Road instance, the one that says all property owners, that is the portion that's attributable to Wheatland Valley, Magnolia Hills, and all of the undeveloped property. So depending on whether you had 126804C petitions in hand or not, that could be cost, annual cost that would be paid by property owners, or it could be costs that are paid by the city.
I think the next slides are ours. So as a conclusion to all that, then, staff looked at kind of our history of special assessments, and a lot of this information comes from Debbie, and she can help answer questions. But we currently have 33 projects that are special assessment financed, a balance of $2.4 million that we need to compare the schedule for collection. In speaking with Gina, the bonds are issued in $5,000 increments, and so there's a little bit of offset between those two. But final payoff of the last one that's outstanding at the moment would be 2033. Our debt limit, which is 30% of our assessed valuation, is $146 million. We're currently all debt, issued by the city is at $79 million, and specials account for 13% of that, or 10.4. So we're at 54% of our debt limit, with 47% remaining, and each percentage point equates to 1.4, almost $1.5 million of debt issuance. So we totaled up the outstanding ag deferrals at $42,000. The outstanding 126819, what Jean refers to as benefit fees, is 3.5. And while it's not technically a deferred special, we also identified that we have total cost recovery outstanding of 1.5, almost 1.6 million. So that's another $6 million that we play that over time could be collected. But as Gina mentioned earlier, the ag deferral is about the only one that can actually be counted on that. So Debbie graphed our annual debt compared to our annual collections, and you'll see in a couple of instances there that collections are less than annual debt, and this doesn't account for deferrals yet. So in those instances, that's where, as we look at the binding interest bond, we look at the mill levy that's needed to be levied. Those shortfalls can have an impact of creating need for mill levy to make that payment. Comparing just the debt payment versus the levies with deferrals on them, you can see that on the front end, there's a gap, then they kind of catch up, and then on the back end, collections exceed the debt because they've already paid off the debt, and now we're starting to see those deferrals come in. Trying to break it out, break out Gina's numbers in a little bit different way, trying to isolate the city's share of costs, and then equate that to mill levy, just recognizing that that could have an impact on our mill levy rate or debt.
Things are too new, she.
Right. So we, as we were doing that, we, Gina mentioned that 375 number included both Wheatland Valley and Magnolia Hills, as well as undeveloped property. So we caught that error as it relates to this on the report, and we'll see a different number in there. So with Wheatland Valley, as we described, there's no deferral, there's no city carrying cost. Magnolia Hills, $22,000 a year for that ag deferral equates to about a half of a mill if that were necessary. The developed portion, city at large, in the Markley Road segment, the portion of Magnolia Hills that's already developed, and Foxtail Drive equate to that, $121,000, and there's no expectation that that's going to be deferred and collected at some point. So that essentially equates to 0.27 mils. The undeveloped portion that we talked about with the Markley project, recognizing it could, we could collect that at some point, but just not knowing when, equates to the $270,000 a year, or six tenths of a mill. Holmes Road, the interim for South Holmes equates to the numbers you see there, 0.26, the north end at 0.24, and then taking it from interim to full standard at 0.47. On the other side of that slide is the allocation of cost for, within the developments. So you can see in Wheatland Valley Phase 1, $45,000, almost $46,000 assessments at minimum cost of $4,100. Magnolia Hills Estates, number 2, $43,210, and specials about $3,900. Wheatland Valley, number 1, whenever Markley Road Full Street Standard kicked in, there would be another round of special assessments at $9,800 total, or about $900 a year. Same way with Magnolia Hills Estates, it would be about $8,90812 a year. And then Holmes Road, whenever that timing came into place, you can see there the interim number on South Holmes, $4,700, and the north end at $4,000, and then the full standard at $4,095 and the corresponding annual payments. So I'm not at all prepared to say that all those would be in effect all at the same time. In a perfect circumstance, they might all sufficiently overlap, but they'll all be subject to meeting those criteria and the timing. But that is the extent of what we're talking about covering. So then, just totaling it in a little bit more succinct way, providing another breakdown of the city totals for the city funding, the ag deferral portion, the benefit fee portions as a subtotal, and then breaking out that Markley undeveloped portion. One thing I would note in that bottom right corner there, the Magnolia Hills, Holmes number does not include the ag deferral portion. We caught that at the last minute, that it wasn't included, but it's pretty nominal. So wrapping up, trying to identify the options for your consideration. Some of these, I feel obligated to throw out there, I don't know how much they're really an option, but we could do nothing, both in terms of planning, development, and road improvement. We could fund the perimeter roads in their entirety or in some proportion other than what we proposed as kind of being a proportional distribution of the cost. We could go ahead and permit the developments without perimeter road funding plans in place, and there's plenty of communities that knowingly or unknowingly do that, and we're trying to get ahead of that. We could impose a heightened role on the developer regarding the funding and financing, whether that's percentage share, whether that's, they have to find a way to fund more, and we have some negotiated deferred amount that's different than the proportional amounts. We could alter our street standards. I said lesson there, but that could be the actual street construction, or it could be heightening the traffic count and saying that we're going to defer that improvement further out in the future and buy ourselves more time. And then we could do the special assessment funding districts as we described here. So I started this by saying that it's been a long time coming, and it was frighteningly complex, and I think you can probably see the complexity that's involved at this point. If you happen to answer any questions, we do think that this seems workable, then we now have the framework that's supported by law, we run the numbers, we run the math, and we can begin getting the development agreements prepared and bring that back to you for action in this form, or if you have alternate direction, we'll have to bet that... So that is the last slide in this presentation. I wasn't sure we were going to get done today, so we've at least concluded our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to hear if there's any of the developers out there that's got anything to say about this.
Standby for Smackin' on Hills. We've been here four years trying to get our plat through. We do have the addition to platted, but now we have to come up with a resolution with the city to deal with Holmes and Markley now. The city, over the years, has spent a great deal of money on the eastern portion of the city for future development. And Dean probably knows the numbers, but I'm talking about a major, millions and millions of dollars on sewer line, millions of dollars on water lines. And right now, they're there, we're ready to plug in and use them, but we need to resolve this issue. I would make a note, it just occurred to me in this meeting, if Magnolia, or, excuse me, if Holmes has a traffic count of 225 cars presently, I rather doubt any of the residents of the current Magnolia Hills, which are 95 lots, I doubt whether any of those people are using that road. So I would probably say that that 225 cars is told county, which I understand, the county says, we don't want to deal with this. So, but anyway, that's how I feel.
Would they be able to use Holmes now? Is there, is there where you might get any of those?
No, no, no. We're years away, doesn't matter. That'd be the other thing. Before we touch Holmes...
As far as they're using them, it's not a practical option now?
Oh, not at all. Before we touch Holmes, we're probably seven years away. So, but I'd feel any questions you might have.
I would agree with you, Stan, in terms of the investment. That's why we got that map in, and then the 225 cars is probably attributable to the development that's up in the northeast corner, in that benefit area that we've described, as well as pass-through traffic. I may not directly answer Commissioner Hoppe's question, but I thought his point was the traffic count allocation towards that 4,500. It's definitely not just residents of current Magnolia going to Markley either. It's existing traffic going through the neighborhood and using that collector-gard material street.
I think some of the numbers, I wouldn't see Holmes Road hitting the, needing the full street during my lifetime. If Magnolia was only carrying 4,500 at this time, I would guess that...
And it's out there, some unspecified amount of time, for sure.
And who maintains that road right now? The city maintain it, or is the county?
County. So I do think the 250 standard may spark conversation with the county about, and I mean, some... assumption that at some point Magnolia Hills connects to Holmes, I think the county's going to come to us and say, "May not need to be the full standard, but you can either take it as gravel, or you can start paving it in some other fashion."
On Slide number 52, the one that we just received, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So are those obligations going to be about $850,000 a year?
If everything was all in place at the same time.
So that would be, and that's an annual obligation of 1.89 mils?
Yes. Now, we talked about trying to do some sort of Gantt chart to speculate about the timeline and how many goals will have to be, and what that might look like, and the more we talked about it, the less confident I'm going to be kind of project that out. But to the point, first thing that's going to come into play is the ag deferrals for Magnolia Hills number 2, because that development's ready to go, they've been ready for quite some time, and that's needed to support that Magnolia Hills 2. So that would come along early in the process. Then, I'm not even sure which comes next. The reason I looked at Markley is I figured getting from 4,500 to 6,500 cars is probably more likely, although getting from 225 to 250 on Holmes, that might occur naturally. But until we have development that develops all the way out to Holmes, I don't know. We have to invoke the interim or the full standard, and then it's a function of how quickly they develop. Now, the other thing is there's property out there right now that is indicating no interest in development, but if they see that this plan's in place, and the investment's made, and Magnolia Hills or Wieland Valley are developing some of that farm ground, maybe they might be interested in developing it. But that's all speculative. I don't know what to tell you about it then.
Slide 45 does try to kind of look at, if you notice at the bottom, it's estimating first-year special assessments, so you're looking for some kind of time gauge.
Just procedural, is anyone here who wishes to address, as we bring up any other topic, since this is citizens' open time at 3:45?
I am, Dan. Daily's Wieland Valley. I'd like to emphasize what she just pointed out down at the bottom row there, that some of these events likely won't occur in some of our lifetimes, and particularly Full Street Standard and Holmes Road. And Full Street Standard, even on Markley Road at 4,500 cars trips per day presently, it could take another 20 years before we get to the 6,500, even with these developments fully done. As I estimated, the lots that we're talking about developing as a group would bring potentially another 1,000 trips per day, so that would bring the trip count up to 4,500 per day when that's fully developed. So it's going to take traffic flow from other sources to get it to 6,500, and so from my perspective, the property owners that purchase lots in Wieland Valley will have 15 years to pay off their internal improvement, special assessments. Once they've done that, it could be another five or 10 years before this even hits them. So it gives a nice progression for those property owners to pay for their internal improvements, and then turn around later and help to improve the perimeter road.
I'm a little concerned by you all in this room who don't play the beat. Aside from that, well, and that becomes an issue because if the city has to pay for that, older people don't like tax, property tax increases because they have less money to pay for it. So you might find yourself on the back end of that, depending on your income, if you have poor, got money later on.
If it's helpful, I mean, in this scenario that Mr. Daley described, we should, I would say it is 20 years. We should have more developed lots to assess against and have addressed some of that deferral and some of that benefit favorably, but hard to say what that would look like.
Just as a question, like when Ohio Street got improved, you know, going south and was made four lane, who paid for that?
Predates me, but I assume...
You're talking about the four lane section from Magnolia to Schilling?
To the large.
That was paid for primarily by KDOT, but also by the City at Large, combination of those...
Because I'm just trying to, and I understand what we're trying to do, but I'm trying to also figure out why the property owners get taxed on that because there's so many other people using it. I live a half block off Ohio Street, and I didn't, I wasn't an improvement district that had to pay for that. So I see both sides, but at some point, when a street's being used significantly, and it's not just because of the development, you know, there's questions arise from that too.
That's the situation that Markley's going to probably fall into.
Because you've got people going from East Line to work out south, and they take Markley. Well, that's...
But those traffic triggers, I mean, those are points at which the changes have to occur. You may find the lifestyle dictates that change has to occur before 6,500 trips a day. If you've got kids getting hit crossing the street, people have traffic jams because they can't turn, those residents are going to come in here and demand that the street be built up before that, you know. See a big difference between 6,000 and 6,500 trips a day. If safety and lifestyle are convenient, probably not. The question I have, I hate to make the goal back to 19, I think I can ask it without putting it after...
I might get there by the time you don't get your question.
In the, and this was just an example, I realize that, but it was about the ag deferral. The city is putting money out, obligating itself, let's say 220,000 in the example given. By the time we start getting money back in to pay off that, the money we're getting in is less valuable because of inflation than the money we spend out. Where's that cost of losing our purchasing power being recouped over this?
There's no mechanism for that to be recouped in an ag deferral situation. So that was why I made the comment, but you know, while the total at the bottom of the right-hand column is zero, it's not really zero if you take that into account. I don't know how you would, you and I, you may have different assumptions, you know, about the cost to the city for that.
In fact, right, in all these examples, you're stretching the money out over 20 to 30 years.
You can only legally assess the cost of the project. You can't add any...
But while allowed it, whenever the assessment kicked in, it would be what the original was plus the cost of interest, but it doesn't...
Right. Because at that point, if I'm, if I was doing a 10- to 20-year strategic plan, now I'm looking at the cost of that money for this project versus the cost of that money or the value of that money for some other project.
And not that it mitigates it at all, but that somewhere out in the future, we're going to start getting deferred payments on things we've already paid off.
Yeah, like, is it 21 or 23? One of these years coming up real soon for that type of situation.
And so it's, I don't want to say that it's unexpected revenue, it's definitely expected, and we still have the interest problem, but it's not a one-for-one alignment of the debt and the payments thanks to deferrals.
And generally, is it cheaper to build a road now with a little excess capacity, or delay it 15 years down the road and pay more to build?
Well, with respect...
Just a rhetorical question.
Yeah. Just cost-wise, there might be a little bit of savings there, and we looked at that. What we also looked at was...
Long-term maintenance, though, I don't know.
And the condition of the road, if that need was actually there. Well, that's not always good for a road.
Right. Actually, that's worse for progress drugs, so I don't have any problems. That's a good example of building a road that never got used.
We just didn't have the sense that the demand was there at this point, that necessitated, and that it could be such an extended amount of time that we'd, that like, you know, we weren't sure it was prudent.
My brain hadn't planned on working this hard in that study session.
Well, I guess it wouldn't be any surprise to hear that I'm for recouping the costs for Markley and Holmes as aggressively as we can, especially when I hear that a lot of these, you know, a lot of these developments are perhaps decades away from getting built. So, you know, whatever, whatever we can do to...
The only thing I can think of that would be more aggressive is to put more burden on the developer to fund it upfront. This is all trying to kind of take, make use of what's available in terms of funding resources and options. With respect to how long it's going to take, that's why we ran the total build-out number, and we're approaching 1,100 homes in that full build-out area, not just the proposed Wieland and Magnolia Hills, but that full area represents about 1,100 possible lots.
And if, heaven forbid, the lots don't develop, and the benefit district, the cost of the road or whatever, are assessed against the lot, they're linked to the lot, we could find, we being the city, could find ourselves owning lots with assessments?
Well, one or two things. The kind of the pace of planning, I wouldn't expect that we would have all of them out and assessed and on the market at the same time. But yeah, the way special assessments are set up, if they go into default, they can go sell chair at the courthouse steps. We, as we looked at that risk previously, we felt like it would be worth someone's investment to go ahead and pay off just the defaulted specials in return for, and the back taxes on the defaulted specials are probably going to make that lot appealing. But there are communities in Kansas that decided to go buy lots to deal with defaulted specials.
Because on Wieland, let's say, the first phase is what, 24 lots? That would be our risk there. And Magnolia Hills Estate, what was your?
29.
29. So we're talking 50-some lots, which isn't, so it's not like we have 1,100 lots at risk right away. I mean, that's what I think you are.
Unlike Commissioner Hodges' approach, but I also want to see where we have the room to negotiate, to see if staggering the benefit districts can still be done in an aggressive fashion, but there's too many numbers floating around my head.
I understand. I purpose this with how hard it was to pull it together as a staff.
What plan should we make to discuss this next? Because we're going to have to get out of here.
I know it's urgent for the developers, it's been a long time coming, and we have quite a few study sessions stacked up, but if you are willing to meet early, we could cover two topics in one study session and pick up where we left off.
Yeah. Something I think I'd like to ask or get some more information on too is the ag deferral that we're talking about for that big section, and whether there might be any other options?
Okay. Two or three weeks, and have questions, ask the city manager.
How quick are we getting back to the topic? I mean, considering that, you know, what's been presented to us, and assuming that the developers are on board with it, I'm, we've got 30 million or more in sewer lines out there, and these don't seem like the big numbers that we should stub our toe on. I think we need to get these projects moving.
But given how long it's taken to get to this point, I'm committed to keeping it moving. I would rather not, you know, do it in two-week chunks, but I realize you need time to think about it, but if you want to forward your questions to me, it's only two weeks, early as...
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Appreciate your patience. I realize this was a ton of information. Gina deserves an incredible amount of credit.
My brain is fried.